Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good to see everybody here today. I don't know if you noticed, did some painting in here and kind of remodeling some facilities here in the county building. Looks good. Today is January 7th, 2019. I'll go ahead and get this out of the way. I'm a new granddad for the first time. Oldest daughter had a baby a couple of days ago, so I've been a little out of the loop. But we're real proud and good way to bring in the year of 2019. We are honored that you are here today. We are glad to be here today. Every day above ground's a good day, right Jim?
Every one. Chairman, while we're at a pause right here making fun of me, get the sheriff to come up and find out who this stranger is over here at the press table.
We should.
Looks like he's not a real person.
Many of you-
Wait a minute, he sounds like somebody we used to know.
Many of you may know Josh Bergeron, who left us for greener pasture, but evidently that pasture is not as green, and he's back. As the editor of the Salisbury Post, we're glad to have him back. We actually like him.
We used to, anyway.
We used to, yeah. So we just encourage him to get his stories right. So welcome back, Josh. Good to have you here. So it's been the tradition of not only this board, but boards all across the nation, clear back before the founding of America, in fact, that we do a couple of things. Well, that far back, we didn't have the pledge, but we're going to do that today. But we do what's called a solemnizing prayer, and that's for us, the commissioners. It's a time for us to focus our attention on the business that's before us, and we have a chaplain that will come forward and ask for wisdom as we do the business of the people of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Dear Lord, we thank you for another year you've blessed us with, Lord, and we thank you for the dedication of the county commissioners, and we pray, Lord, that you would just guide and lead them, Lord, as we start this new year, Lord. Blessings upon them, Lord, and blessings upon Rowan County. Guide and direct us, Lord, this meeting today, Lord. Thank you for the privilege that we can be here today to represent you, Lord. Thank you again for the privilege that we have in this nation that we live in, Lord. Guide and direct us now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Happy New Year to you. All right, we've got a few. Let's see here. Got some additions and deletions to the agenda. The first item that we're going to remove, at their request, is the resolution appointing review officer. So item number C from consent, we're going to remove. And item K, that we're also going to remove. And then you guys had received an email and some information at your desk regarding Department of Transportation and Roads, and that will be added to consent under item Q. Item Q. And then the only other thing is, we will add, let's see, under board appointments, we will add another appointment for the Rowan County Board of Health. Judy's term expired on January 1st, so we're going to catch that up. So we'll add that as the last item on Board of Health appointments, okay? Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And let's see. All right, then we have the minutes from December 3rd have been provided for us. So do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. The amended consent agenda then is before you. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, public comment period. We have one. Mr. Ronnie Smith. Ronnie, welcome back. We've missed you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's great to be back, and I think I'm the only public comment today, so I thought I'd start the new year outright by saying good afternoon and happy new year to everyone. My name is Ronnie Smith. Someone said they remind me of a bad winter cold. I keep coming back, but I'm full of good news today, I hope. I'm here today to share with you several of our new year's resolutions, and I put "our" in quotes because I hope you will adopt these as well. We continue to ask for your full and total support for several very magnificent projects which we've been working on in Salisbury and Rowan County. Briefly, as you may be aware, these include, number one, our Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial. We've now been working on that for eight years, and for reasons which I cannot understand, the city has continued to delay and obstruct this magnificent project. 2019 will be the year that we erect that monument with your help. Thank you very much. We also look forward this year to the transfer of the deed of 37 acres for the enlargement and the enhancement of the Salisbury National Cemetery to include the new Salisbury Greenway and the Carolina Thread Trail. That, again, will be a magnificent project which we hope will be finalized this year. In addition to that, a fairly new project which I'm going to ask your full support on is the Yakkin River Park. At the Yakkin River, as you come across the river into Rowan County, this is a magnificent park, and we want to dress up the Rowan County side as nicely as they have the Davidson County side. In addition to that, we want you to support the Bell Tower Green Project and hopefully the Trinity Oaks Downtown, major high-rise senior citizen housing project which will hopefully be underway. It's our hope and our prayer that most all of these projects can be finalized this year. With your total support and cooperation, our dreams for Rowan County, a better Rowan County, can be a reality. I want to sincerely thank you for your support in the past. We look forward to 2019 as a year of progress for Rowan County. May God bless you, may God bless our citizens, our veterans, and may God bless America. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ronnie. All right, there's no others that have signed up, so we'll move into our regular agenda. Item number three. Is Franklin here? Oh, there we are. Our Rowan Transit Director. If you've not met Franklin yet, he's still fairly new, been here a few months. Franklin, welcome.
Thank you. Happy New Year to the board. I'll be brief. I'm coming for the board today. North Carolina Public Transportation has asked Rowan Transit to combine our application grant, 5310. This is a capital grant. They're asking us to combine the rural side of this grant. This grant is used for some dialysis treatments, some vocational and Trinity Living. It does require a new local match, no match from the county. It's a 50-50 grant. For that reason, we are asking to conduct a public hearing in regards to that change.
So we were doing an 80-20 match before?
It has been previously an 80-20.
Okay, and what is our part of that? What is our 20 represented in a dollar figure?
Honestly, I don't have that in front of me, sir. I can't get that information for you.
You know?
I don't have that either.
Does anybody know?
What I can say is that when Franklin and I have talked about it, there is money from the sale of vehicles that happened in the prior fiscal year that we were going to use to make up the difference in revenue.
I mean, is there a ballpark? Is this 10,000? Is it 200,000?
No, sir. I think it's more like, I think it's more like 30,000.
Yes, I'm taking a guess and saying it's more like 30,000.
That's the 50 or the 20?
That would be the 20, right. The federal government puts in the 80, the federal and the state. They do the 80, we do the 20. It's more like 20,000.
All right, so we're going to 50, 50 grand then. Any questions for Franklin?
And if I may, I would like to add, Chairman, I have spoke to both of the directors that this mainly affects, which would be Gary Yelton, who's the executive director of Rowan, Vocational Center, as well as Christina Joyce, who is the director of Trinity Living Center. I've had one-on-one meetings with both of them, so they are aware.
But this money is directly for your department, is that correct?
It is. And what it does is it allows us to do more rural trips, and it really assists those two main entities. But it is for our department, but it helps us to provide more service for those citizens that live in rural parts of the county.
All right, any other questions? All right, then just hang out there, and we'll open the floor. We'll have a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this, if you have anything to add for or against, or just have a comment, come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, someone have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the transportation grant change.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, then all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank Franklin.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Finance Department, Leslie, presentation of the 2018 financial report.
We have Carrie Dunlap from Martin Starnes is here for the presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be here with you today. I have some numbers for you to just share, a brief presentation about the 2018 audit of financial statements. I believe you all have a copy, so as we're going through the presentation, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me as we go along, or you can ask questions at the end either way. We appreciate the opportunity to be your auditors again this year, and we are happy to report that there is an unmodified or clean opinion, so that's the goal of your audit, and there's no reason to think that the numbers are materially misstated, so that's the goal of the audit. And then we really appreciate your staff. They're very cooperative. We have lots of requests that keep increasing over the years, so they get them to us as quick as we ask for them, which we can't ask for anything more than that, so we really appreciate that. For the general fund summary, the revenues were about 142, close to 142 million this year, and expenditures were 141 million. So that was an increase of about 1.56 million, which was a 1.1 percent change, and the main increase was for ad valorem taxes. The expenditures increased by 2.8 million, which was a 2 percent change, and that was mainly due to an increase in general government and public safety. And in the coming slides, we'll do more in-depth of the top three revenues and expenditures. So next, we'll talk about fund balance. Fund balance serves as a measure of your financial resources available, and there's the calculation. There are five different classifications: non-spendable, such as inventory, restricted or any external restrictions from laws or grantors, committed or any internal constraints that you guys at the board, you put those in place, you would also have to have an action if any of those needed to be undone. Assigned is a lower constraint, it's just an internal, you know, this might need to be committed or restricted in the future. And unassigned is the only thing that has absolutely no other constraints. So just to show where the county stands with fund balance, it's 51.8 million, which was a 325,000 increase this year, and this also takes into account your inventory, which decreased like $9.5,000 this year, so without that, it would have been a 334,000 increase. There was a larger increase last year of 959,000, and that inventory decrease last year was only 7.5. So it's about a $2,000 increase in, or decrease in the additional increase in inventory this year. To dive into the fund balance a little bit deeper, the available fund balance is the calculation that the LGC uses to compare you to other units, and to get this calculation, you take your total fund balance and you back out any non-spendable in the stabilization by state statute, which is just the state law. And your calculation of that this year was, you go from your 51.8, you back out your non-spendable, and your stabilization by state statute, so your available fund balance is 35.6 million. This did increase over last year by 649,000. And the available fund balance, again, is just the LGC's definition, so you will also want to consider these other restrictions on your fund balance. You don't want to think that the full 35.6 million is completely available, so if you back out all the other classifications, your restricted, your committed, and assigned, that leaves you at 18.3 million, and this did decrease slightly over last year, but only by 188,000. So that was a brief overview of your fund balance, and next, we're going to look at your top three revenues. So property taxes is your largest percentage of revenues at 58%, and then sales tax at 17, and restricted intergovernmental at 15%. And each, I'm going to show you the three slides as to how those revenues compare over last year. So property taxes increased about 1 million, or 1.3%, so you're close to 81.2 million this year in property taxes. The next is your local option sales tax, which increased by 3.7% or about 865,000 this year. And then the third largest revenue is your restricted intergovernmental, which decreased 1.68 million or 7.5%. And a large driver behind that was the childcare development revenues. They were converted into NCFAST, so that was the biggest driver behind that decrease. Next, we'll look at your expenditures. So your total expenditures are about 141,000. The largest percentages are education, public safety, and human services. Education's the largest at 31%. So education compared to last year ended at about 44 million, which increased 1 million or 2.3% over last year.
Does that include debt service?
No, there's a separate side for debt service that I'll show you at the end. So public safety increased 1.7 million or 6% up to close to 30 million. Human services decreased 2.6 million or about 9% this year, so it ended at 26 million.
Is that that 2 million you were talking about?
I believe it's related to the childcare as well. All those roll up into, all the DSS programs roll up into human services. So this slide is the debt service slide, and it shows that it's about 15.7 million. It had increased 1.2% or 185,000. So it stayed pretty consistent over last year. I think there were a couple minor pieces of new debt this year, but nothing significant. So that's it for the general fund. Your enterprise funds, the landfill fund unrestricted net position was up to 5 million this year. Your cash flow from operations went down a little bit to 2.1, and your net income for the GAAP basis is 567,000 over last year. For the airport, the unrestricted net position was 1.9, and then your cash flow from operations went down a little bit to 215, a deficit of 215,000, and then your net income was a deficit of 286,000.
What was the cause of that?
There's a transfer, I believe.
Yeah, I think there's two reasons for that. One is, in the prior year, we had roughly 750,000 transferred for the general fund, and that's for capital projects. One was to complete the terminal, and the other are the grants, particularly the north apron rehabilitation, south apron expansion. So we had less of a transfer, $500,000 less of a transfer between the two years. And then the other is, the majority of the revenue for the apron project, we received that last year.
Thank you. Okay, so that's it for the airport fund. And are there any other questions on the enterprise funds? Okay. I'm going to talk to you about compliance for just a few minutes. So last year, the biggest change that was implemented was the direct benefit programs came off the schedule of federal expenditures of state awards. So if you look at your copy of your audit report, that schedule starts on page 4-21. And so if you look at the total federal awards, it was roughly 12.5 million, whereas in previous years, it's been almost more than double that. So the way that impacts the major program determination, our federal program threshold went from $3 million down to $750,000. So that is a very different, or a significant decrease. So in the past, where we've mostly focused on Medicaid, because that's been the bulk of your direct benefit programs, now we're having to look at a lot smaller programs that haven't been tested in the past. So the Office of the State Auditor actually required agreed-upon procedures engagement for Medicaid this year, and next year, they are going to require that for Medicaid and TANF. So they have certain programs that they turn on, and next year, TANF is turned on. So that's the biggest changes that we felt that were the biggest impact this year. The major program determination, and I'll show you this slide as well, so your major programs in '16, you only had three. '17 was two, and then this last year, we had to test nine programs. So as you can imagine, that's more than tripling the number of programs we've had to test. And that's county, you know, across the state. We've seen that everywhere we've went this year. So it's the nature of going from your $3 million threshold down to 750,000. And so I did also look at a projection for next year based on, the best we can do to project for next year is to base it on this year's SEFA. So if we look at this year's numbers, and we do all of our high-risk and low-risk and high-risk As and high-risk Bs, like, it's a very complicated calculation with uniform guidance now, but I'm happy to go into more detail with anyone if they're interested in that. But it looks like it's going to be at the minimum six to nine programs again next year. And unfortunately, until we get the final schedule of federal and state awards from the staff, you don't know for sure if something's going to pop out, and that happened to us this year. Once we got all the final confirmations and we got that final SEFA, the TANF program actually popped out as over 750,000. So that was something we hadn't planned to test that we ended up having to test because it was a high-risk major program. So there's all kinds of things like that going into factor with compliance testing now, and I just wanted you to be aware and kind of explain, you know, if we've taken longer to complete the audit, that that's why. We're having to spend a lot more time at the Department of Social Services than we normally do, and we're trying to get ahead of it as much as possible, and DSS has been great about, we have been meeting with them a lot more frequently to let them know what we need and things that are changing, so we're trying to stay ahead of that, and if we have any issues, we let them know as soon as possible so we can resolve those as quickly as possible. But it is just extra testing, extra hours, and there's just nothing we can do about it. But I just wanted you guys to be aware, so do you have any questions on that? If not, that's the end of my presentation, so if we want to go back to any slides, or if there's anything else, if there are any questions you have after the fact, please reach out to me. The partner at our firm is also available to have any extra discussions if you want to talk about anything in more detail, so please let me know. We are available for you guys.
Any questions for the auditor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to share this with you.
Leslie, anything from you?
No, well, I'll say a couple things, and one is, I think the Rowan County staff, and Jim and Derek are both here, they work very, very hard, and the audit comprises so many. I mean, every single person in the finance department does touch the audit. They have a role in the audit. And also, every department. So we really appreciate everything, the cooperation across the board and the county. And also with Martin Starnes this year, Carrie came back. She'd been on our audit before, but was not last year, and she came back this year, and the communication with Martin Starnes was just so improved this year. So I really do appreciate that. She and Erica Brown, the partner, they really worked well with us, so we do appreciate that.
And we submitted the report to the LGC by November 30th, and we already have approval, so we're a lot way ahead of last year, so everything went really smoothly, so we appreciate that, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie, did the new computer system help this year in accumulating your figures?
I don't think for the audit, for this year, that, for 2018, that you can say that the new system helped. However, we do, we have purchased the module. There's a Munis Caffer module, and we'll have that implemented for 2019. And so a year from now, hopefully, I'll give you a different answer. I mean, it's pulling the exact same information out of the system that we pulled from the prior system for 2018, but with the module, what we'll be able to do is code each account so that it'll flow through, so that you can generate statements. Right now, we don't do that. Right now, we dump all the information into Excel, and that's what we've done for a number of years.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Leslie, could you explain how well DSS's programs get along with our county programs? In other words, not?
So, what exactly?
Well, I think the board needs to understand that the state social services is requiring us to use their-
Their software.
Software, which does not communicate well with our new county software. And our finance person out at DSS is having to re-enter everything that comes out of their report, so it goes into our accounting report. And it's, from my perspective, it's absolutely ridiculous, but it's the way it is.
Fix that.
Actually, I wasn't aware, so now that I'm aware, maybe I can fix that.
Probably not, but, all right, well, thanks. All right, item number five, budget amendment's been provided for us. We have a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let's move to board appointments. I've got a few. All right, Airport Advisory Board, there's one vacancy. Mr. Richard Franklin has applied. Do we have a motion to approve that? As a member of the business community. All right, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So Ellis Cross Country, Ellis Crossroads Country Volunteer Fire Department. Board of Trustees, William Kyle's term expired December 31st. He'd like to be reappointed and has submitted an application. Do we have a motion to approve William Kyle's reappointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On Enigville Volunteer Fire Department, Jonathan Jenkins has resigned. Do we have a motion to accept that resignation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mitchell Rousey has applied to fulfill the remainder of his term, and so motion to approve Mitchell Rousey.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Parks and Rec, Matthew Owens' term expired at the end of the year. He's reapplied for reappointment, so his term will end December 31st, 2021. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan Public Library Board, Gary Fries, he expired December 31st, has asked for reappointment through December 31st, 2021. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Salisbury, Rowan, EDC, Tim Proppers' term expired December 31st. He has applied for reappointment, will run through 2021. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's one county-appointed vacancy for the EDC. The EDC is recommended to us. Greg Anderson, who is the publisher of the Salisbury Post, we have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan County ZBA, Keith Knight's term ended on November 30th. He's asked for reappointment that would run through November 30th, 2021. Motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last one is Rowan County Board of Health. Last one is Rowan County Board of Health. Judy, Judy's term ended on December 31st, so she's applied for reappointment that will end 12/31/21. Motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan County, we have 36 openings. Here's an opportunity to get involved in local government, good training grounds for leadership, and I would appreciate you getting involved in your local community. So, let's see here. We've got a little closed session. So I'd like to make a motion that the Board now entering the closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A1, to consider approval of the December 3rd closed session minutes, and 143, 318.11A3 for attorney-client privileged communication regarding the ACLU prayer case. It's a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll get going as soon as we empty out our room here. All right, we are back in session, and so we have a motion to approve the agreement with the proposed order of the Middle District of North Carolina.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, have a great week.